Good afternoon, welcome to City Council Workshop for February 23rd, 2022. I'll call the meeting to order. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. The agenda has been properly posted and all members of council are present in chambers. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment is limited to matters on the agenda. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak. As always, we ask people to be civil and concise. And we'll begin with anybody here in chambers. It appears that it's all staff in chambers right now. So we'll proceed to any phone calls. Anyone wishing to call in, the number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for public comment?
No written comments were received.
Thank you. Before closing public comment, I'll ask again if there's anyone present that would like to speak. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the initial public comment period. Move to item one on the agenda, presentation and discussion about a spending plan for the American Rescue Plan ARPA funds. Mr. Tedder.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city is slated to receive $21.77 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds. We've received half of the funds so far and expect to receive the second half around May of this year. So today, let me walk you through a little bit of what I have planned for the presentation. So I'll go over some highlights on changes that were made through the final rule by the Department of Treasury and then I'll walk you through the eligible uses through that. We'll go through projects proposed by staff and the projects that you as the council have proposed thus far and have a conversation on public input and how we want to see that. Perhaps have more discussion on ideas that you might have. And at the end, hopefully we'll have a direction to bring a more comprehensive spend plan for adoption at a future regular council meeting. So feel free to stop me at any time with questions, comments, and I'll go ahead and get started. Okay, so the final rule, what changed? Essentially clarity. So we received a lot more simplicity and flexibility in the four main categories that are approved uses of the ARPA funds, which include public health and negative economic impacts, premium pay, revenue loss, and then infrastructure, which includes water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So let's go ahead and dive into what each of those mean to us. So the first item, public health and negative public impacts. So in responding to public health and negative economic impacts, the final rule stated that the Treasury will consider two eligibility requirements. So that's if there's a negative public health impact or harm, or if a program, service, or intervention responds to that impact or harm. It also allows for nonprofits or small businesses to be sub recipients acting on behalf of the local government. It also allows for small businesses or nonprofits that suffered economically to be considered as a beneficiary. So I have two examples for you. One is if you're providing funds to a nonprofit to run a vaccine clinic, they're essentially acting as an arm of the local government, so then they must follow the same compliance and reporting rules that we were subjected to. But on the other hand, if we're providing a grant to a small business or nonprofit that suffered economically, that had reduced donations or revenue through the pandemic, then they're considered a beneficiary and not a sub recipient, so then they're not subjected to the reporting requirements. The second piece of approved uses is premium pay. That's for eligible workers that are performing essential work and responsive to workers performing essential work during the public health emergency. And the final rule makes it clear that any employee of the government, local government, Boulder City are eligible workers, and there's a maximum of 25,000 over the life of the program per worker, if you so choose to do something like that. So the most exciting piece that became clear to us is the streamlined revenue loss provision. So under the final rule, local governments can elect to simply elect to use $10 million within the revenue loss category, even without an actual revenue loss. And we were lucky here in Boulder City to not experience a revenue loss throughout last year. And the allocation can support any local government services or programs. So it's tax season, so let's use that as comparison. So the streamlined revenue loss is similar to the standard deduction. So we can just elect to do that and the $10 million is open for use, kind of similar to the CARES Act funds, but it's actually a little bit more open. So then the other large piece that is an approved use is infrastructure. So Treasury will consider an investment in infrastructure necessary if it meets two criteria, that it's responsive to achieve and maintain an adequate level of service and it's a cost-effective means considering any alternatives. So it does give an example of what does not meet cost-effective needs. So a recipient may not use the funds to pursue a costly dam rehabilitation, to provide drinking water to community if they can provide that service with a smaller investment by drawing water from another available reservoir. So that's just an example. So they want you to use the most cost-effective means in accomplishing the goals related to infrastructure. And it also cleared up the fact that it's also available to be used for storm water. So any kind of storm drains, culverts, retention basins, even rain barrels. So we can use the infrastructure provision for water, wastewater, storm water. And then there's also a piece on broadband. So I did have a follow-up call with Brian Mitchell. He's in the governor's office focusing on broadband. And he had a few things to share with me. Clark County's been looking at connectivity to their government facilities related to ARPA. And if it goes through a low-income area, the provider can choose to serve that area while they have the open trenching, which is the most costly piece of making broadband available. Using the NTIA, they have funding, but it does require a 25% match. So ARPA funds can be used as a match, but we are still waiting on new broadband maps because currently Boulder City does not meet the eligibility for being underserved. So I've been kind of thinking of the ARPA funds as almost two separate pots of money. So we had the first tranche that we received in 2021 of the $10.8 million, and then we're receiving the other $10.8 million in spring of 2022. $10 million of that can be used under the streamlined revenue loss provision, and it can be essentially spent in any way that you choose. And then $11.7 million must be spent on those ARPA-approved expenditures, like the wastewater, water pandemic response supporting small business, nonprofits, et cetera. I also followed up with ICMA to look at their survey on what other communities are using their ARPA funds on. And infrastructure was the top investment category for communities of all sizes, followed by replacing that lost revenue using the either revenue loss provision or an actual And then capital improvement plans are also highly influential in setting priorities for the recovery spending used by three out of four communities as part of their planning. And over approximately 40% of non-entitlement communities are utilizing their strategic plans that were developed prior to the pandemic to guide their spending as well. So in our current identified projects, we've had 193,500 that's already been committed by the council. And then we have staff recommendations for infrastructure. So in your CIP book, the financial 2022 and 23 projects that was included in the packet includes those projects for water and wastewater, and then the proposed golf course irrigation rehabilitation, which would also save us money in the long run, using approximately half the amount of water that we use right now to irrigate the course until we move forward with the Southern Nevada Water Authority change. And then for the remaining 620,000 of the first tranche, we could use that as part of mental health for the drug court and social services. Park maintenance is another eligible expense, since parks were more heavily utilized throughout the pandemic. Paid leave for new employees that don't have leave, if that's something you would be interested in. And then converting to raw water for water conservation at parks. And that would be for the first tranche as recommendations. And then in that second tranche, which we'll be receiving later this year, the $10 million can be used for all types of things. So identifying the different software programs that will be included in our operating budget request, those could all be used with these funds. Facilities upgrades. It was mentioned last night, the Smith Building. There's other buildings that need upgrades, such as the police station, which was pushed back in the CIP, City Hall, facility upgrades, things of that nature to make things ADA compliant as well. The city shops needs warehousing space and kind of a retooling of that area. Any kind of implementation of night skies initiatives, once we bring that back to you. And then even the electric vehicle pilot program would be something that we could use within that funding. It's also been brought up, business grant program to expand outdoor dining options, if that was something you would be interested in. Home repair to assist property owners to improve the integrity of their properties, especially targeting seniors that want to age in place. Investment in ADA compliance throughout the city. And then the municipal code update that the council's looking to do, that would be something that could also be used for these funds. And the remaining 886,000 would be also subject to the final rule criteria in that second tranche. So staff's initial recommendation would be narrowing down the first half of the money, the uses that you would like to see in that last slide that I was on. And then we could start identifying the projects for the second tranche, but completely open to all of your feedback and ideas. The CIP projects are now on the public-facing portal from ClearGov, so that the community can also go in, click on them, see photos of the butterfly valves that we want to replace for the water system, things of that nature. And then we've also come up with an email address for people to send questions and ideas, arpa@bcnv.org. And my recommendation would be for us to do a public open house type situation where we would have different boards around the room, and we could gauge the public on some of those uses for the $10 million to see what the community's priorities are. But I'm here to facilitate and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. One of my questions is regarding the broadband. I know you said that we're not considered underserved. Is that the entirety of Boulder City? Or, I mean, I guess, how is it determined what is underserved, if there are areas or not? You know what I'm kind of getting at?
Completely. So the current broadband maps go off of block by block. So if one house on a block meets the criteria of being served, which is now the criteria is 100 megabyte download speed, then that whole block is served. So under the current maps, our community shows no need at all. However, they are currently updating those maps. They thought they would be out at the beginning of the year, but it sounds like it might be more like third, fourth quarter. But I have been in close contact with that contact in the governor's office, and he has represented that once we do get the new broadband maps, there are other pots of money that we could use. We might have to come up with that match that I had mentioned, but there's other funds that would primarily cover any kind of broadband-type upgrades that we could do to help the community.
And so you said if there was just one house with 100 download speed? Because 100 downloads speeds, it's pretty impressive. It's definitely a lot more than we have. So that means, so, I mean, essentially what we're assuming then is that on every block, at least one house then has that, is, I guess, what the current map says?
That's what I'm told. I struggle to see how that could be possible, but I'm really hopeful that the new maps would be more representative. The original criteria was actually, I believe it was 20 megabytes, and that also said that we were served. So hopefully the new maps will actually represent what's actually happening.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was a little surprised to hear that because, again, 100 download speed is impressive, and I'd be surprised if there were that many out there. Regarding irrigation, I know it had mentioned water needs as far as drinking water and wastewater. Is irrigation then considered wastewater?
It's considered a water system, so we could use it for that.
And then regarding the negative economic impact, we were talking about public health needs as they related to the impact of COVID. But of course, COVID had a lot of, there were a lot of things that were impacted, right? We saw a higher use of, you know, overdose, you know, substance abuse, things like that also associated. So are those things also covered under that first tranche?
Yeah, so it can be used to support any kind of mental health services, social-type services, definitely.
And then regarding essential workers, I mean, obviously, police, fire. What about, you know, the essential workers, you know, there at Albertson's that were working, you know, in the middle of the whole thing, making sure people had food, or at least being open so that people could buy something? I'm not saying that we would get money there, but I'm just saying, are they considered essential workers? Because that was the term used at the time, but is that what's actually covered here?
So in this presentation, when I refer to essential workers, it's referring to our own employees. But technically, you could do like a sub-grant recipient, but then it kind of opens it up to every business.
Right, I'm not, I don't want to pick out on anyone. I'm just wanting to make sure I understand what that eligibility criteria looks like. Those are my questions for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, a couple of things came up. One of the things that have been of great concern for me for probably as long as I've lived here has been our wastewater situation. I see, you know, one of the arguments has been that we have been able to sell our effluent for dust mitigation, especially say to the gravel pit, and say somewhere down the line, the private owners of that property decide to convert that space to something other than a gravel pit, and we no longer have, it's no longer a usable resource. So to eliminate that argument. And that SNWA had wanted to fund a project and may be willing to fund an alternative to their original idea, say to convert that water into secondary treatment so that we could use it on the golf courses. I'm assuming that project could also be funded. So what I would like to know, and whether this is directed to you or to Councilmember Adams, is what part of a project of that caliber would SNWA be willing to fund and that could we use than a matching system or even come up with a certain amount so that we could actually start taking action on not being the only municipality in Southern Nevada that does not recycle its wastewater? That, to me, just causes a tremendous amount of dissonance. So that's a piece of information, I think. We talk about this kind of project, we've been talking about this kind of project for a while, but if we have access to these kinds of resources that will cover a wastewater project, and we're also looking at retooling our golf course irrigation systems, that all of that put together, what would we have available to do that and how could we do that?
Sure. So the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant, we are still working on that. The Public Works Director and I, over the past several months, and our new utilities director have been trying to get that in a formalized agreement so that we can have our legal team review it, and then it would come to you. So I'm hopeful that we'll have that within the next month or two.
Now, that's just...
For the upgrade of the treatment plant.
Upgrading it so that we could use the water for something other than dumping or dust mitigation?
Correct. So it originally was proposed to use that water for the golf courses and Veterans Park, possibly ABC Park, constructing water lines to those parks, those water lines. There might be some room there for the Water Authority to help us with those. And then the actual $2 million that was in my presentation would most likely be our match in a matching program to rehabilitate all of the irrigation systems, because the actual cost estimates would be closer to $6 million.
For just the irrigation system? Not to reconstruct the whole wastewater treatment facility, but just the water lines and so on? Okay. Because to me, that's like, that's been the first thing on my priority list since I learned about what goes on out there at our water treatment facility. And especially now that we know there's a possibility that the users of that wastewater effluent may eventually no longer need it.
And with improved efficiencies on the areas that we would use the effluent, we might still have some that we could sell contractually?
Oh, sure, sure. Hopefully, we would always have that ability to make that decision.
And along the same line with the Water Authority upgrade of the treatment plant, their main priority is for us to just reuse the water in any way. So it could be used in any way.
Okay, great. Second question, especially because it came up again yesterday. We have an issue of having no, you know, in the event, sometime in the future, we were to have, need more restrictive areas for our pets, in terms of the construction or development of a municipal dog park, is that the possibility under this funding? Or would that have to be, say, under the $10 million where we can sort of use it as we would like to?
It would be under the $10 million revenue loss provision, because it would be construction, not maintenance. So even if it just included identifying a current area that has grass that we wanted to fence off into a large dog, small dog area, if it needed any upgrades, you know, buying the little baggy holders, things like that.
Fencing, you know, putting downside in the irrigation system, but just not the maintenance of it?
Correct.
Because that would have to come out of the...
So park maintenance would be like repainting benches, updating, replacing playground equipment, things of that nature.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it for now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Fox?
Touch base on the premium pay. The 25,000 maximum over the life of the program, can you dig a little bit deeper on that for me?
So in the final rule, it says that you technically could spend 25,000 on each employee. I wouldn't recommend that, but I just wanted to put it in there as that's the constraint.
And what's the life of the program?
So we have until 2026?
2024 or 2026?
Yeah, commit the funds by 2024 and then spend the funds by 2026.
Okay. And would that be 25,000 a year or just 25 for...
Total, over the life of the program.
Perfect, okay. And then to touch base on the broadband, how do they determine reliable broadband? Because it is pretty awful out here.
So again, the maps are not the most helpful that we have right now, but the new ones should address reliability as well. I have had some conversations with all three of the providers that we currently have here, which is CenturyLink, which... Century Link, which is owned by Lumen. Um, I actually have a meeting with their new government relations person, I believe, in a week or two. And then I've talked with LVNet and Cox. And they're all looking at ways to better serve us, but looking at what, you know, growth potential is there and it's a business decision on their end.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. I know that we do have some current, um, projects, for lack of a better word, that are ongoing for us. Could we use some of this monies for those as far as wastewater, um, water projects, thus saving that money for other things for the city?
So the projects that are identified in this plan would essentially free up money for other projects in the enterprise fund. So for water, for wastewater. So, um, Diane and her team did input if we utilize the ARPA funds in the Raftellus model. And it does lengthen the amount of time that those funds are doing exceptionally well. So it would, it would essentially mean that rates would be able to stay low. And yeah, we could essentially do more projects in a quicker amount of time.
So I, I'm just clarifying for a minute. Did you say then, say we use it for wastewater or whatever then, and we save 2 million in that, then it would have to stay in that area? It would have to stay in utilities or in?
It would stay in the fund.
Wouldn't be just open to be used somewhere else?
And the thing with that is, there's just such narrow pockets of where we can spend the money, so we would essentially have to spend it in that area. Unless we found other projects that were a large amount, which most likely is not, you know, achievable. So then we'd have to give the money back.
And then also I was seeing the golf courses. If we do change our wa- um, water delivery system and we do take that treated wastewater and we put it on the golf course or on the park or whatever, um, does that require a different type of irrigation system?
So right now it's all a single system and it would need two different types of systems. So the greens have to be flushed with potable water from time to time. So there would have to be major changes with the, with the systems.
And that's all included in the 2 million that you were thinking, or the?
If the, if the program with Southern Nevada Water Authority worked out, I think that it would, um, to have that as our match.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of items, again, on the irrigation, uh, that, that is to be considered a water project under the guidelines of the ARPA funds?
Yes.
And, you know, looking at what you have in, uh, in your presentation there, I'm not able to identify which projects off of the water and wastewater CIP list are identified for the use of those funds. Uh, is it possible to get that information so we know, you know, rather than going through the entire book? Exactly which projects those are?
Yeah, definitely. I believe it's every project that's actually in there for the 23 and 24. But I will give you a list.
All right. Regarding the expenses for the mental health, I believe you had identified, uh, the drug court. I don't know if that's in need of additional funding. In talking with Judge Miller, there is some type of grant program, uh, through the state system, state court system. So I, I don't know what that might entail. I know that you and I have talked with, uh, the hospital about, uh, doing something where we might have, uh, a position that gets funded. Would that be something eligible under these funds?
It would be eligible for any type of mental health or social service liaison, something of that nature, definitely.
All right. The paid leave for new employees, uh, I'm not sure how that would work. Don't new employees begin earning, uh, leave as soon as they start working?
They do. So what we ran into, since I actually started with the city in August, we've had several instances where, uh, let's just say a new police officer, they go out on a call, they contracted COVID and then they only have a couple of days of leave because it accrues a few hours of pay period. So they needed to be off a couple of weeks because their symptoms didn't improve. And, um, so they were, they were out of leave. But I think we could address that through a donated leave policy, um, retooling that instead of offering this, but it was, it was an idea.
Okay. And, and I believe the, uh, the guidance from CDC has ended, but I thought under some of the original guidelines, if a person were out due to COVID, um, that the employer was responsible for the, that expense anyway.
Yeah, that ended last year.
Okay.
So, um, anyone going forward had to just, you know, use their own leave.
Because we know the guidelines have not changed very frequently during all of this, so. And yes, I'm being facetious about that.
It's new every day.
Seems that way. Something that I don't see, uh, being considered at all, and, and I really think deserves a great deal of consideration, is putting forth support for our, our schoolchildren and how the city may be able to do things. There were a couple of things that the CARES Act money was intended for. You know, I, I feel it was very unfortunate the way that came about. Uh, it, it certainly wasn't brought forth early in the process. It wasn't well thought out, it wasn't well implemented, and it certainly wasn't well funded. I know the Clark County School District has received a significant amount of money under this, uh, Rescue Plan Act as well. But I, I think we're ignoring something in this community that deserves to be addressed. And that is what we might be able to do for the schoolchildren, uh, to help them make up for the lost time that they've had. And I, I don't see that being mentioned anywhere. And I think it's a major thing, not a minor thing. And we need to find some way, uh, to see what those needs could be and what amount of money it may cost. Whether it involves the use of city facilities, uh, whether it involves the, uh, working with other groups to provide maybe things like tutoring or equipment, uh, things of that nature. I don't believe as a community, we've done a good job in supporting, uh, the impact or, uh, fighting against the impact that has occurred for our schoolchildren. And once again, we're, we're not mentioning it at all, at all within, uh, our current plan here. So I, I think that needs a real effort, uh, to look into.
Yeah, we can definitely look at what other municipalities are doing in that regard and come up with some options.
Okay. And, and you know, what happens then is that starts to rearrange the funding i- if, uh, a significant effort is made in that regard. And I'm not talking about just, you know, after school programs or something of that nature. I, I mean, a, a really, uh, concerted effort, uh, to see what we might be able to do, to try and mitigate the impacts that the children have had for the lost time from school. Uh, the software upgrades that you've mentioned in there, uh, I know there have been several programs that have been talked about to improve the efficiency and also transparency for the public. You know, many of those software programs are usually on a yearly license basis. So the only concern I would have is, uh, if we start buying products that when this funding ends, you know, what do we do with that software package? So again, I, I think it, it's a, an appropriate thing to do, but we'd need to look long-term on something like that.
And I might just say with that, um, in our current operating budget that we'll be presenting to you at the, uh, March workshop on the budget, they are put into the budget as of right now. So we would be able to program them once the funding ends, uh, to make sure that we're able to, to keep them. That would be like the new, um, agenda management software, the building, uh, permit software, uh, another software for, um, police, I believe. But, um, those are things that we would need anyway, and a, a couple of them replace others that we have. But it would free up funding for other items.
Okay. And, and again, I, I think we should be well past the, uh, trying to put everything into a spreadsheet and using that as a reporting system, but again, some of these things have long-term support contracts that, uh, you know, I, I would hate to see a program get implemented and then two or three years down the road, uh, we can't pay the support contract any longer on it.
Sure. And ideally, that would be the only thing that is no one-time expense that we would look at, at spending.
All right. There's mention in here about, uh, programs for seniors to support them being able to remain in their homes, uh, doing different things at the homes. I'm assuming you're talking about things like ramps and, and improvements to bathrooms to, uh, support, uh, you know, a person who needs those types of things, you know, I, I hate to call it American Disabilities Act requirements, but there are things like ramps and grab bars and, and lowered, uh, sinks and things like that. Is that what that intent was for?
That is, um, the majority of it, yes. So any kind of changes to make their home more accessible. And then, um, if there's, you know, low-income seniors, people on a fixed income that might not be able to afford a new roof or, um, AC unit, something like that, a major type of expense, that's, that was kind of the general thought. So any kind of uh, a major maintenance item or ADA improvements for, for seniors. And it would have income guidelines and criteria that they would have to meet.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I know that to some extent, both the Senior Center and Lendehan, uh, two nonprofits that have been here a long time have programs already where they provide some of those services. Again, I, I think it, it's well worth looking at, uh, but those, there are already programs out there that we may, uh, I don't recall the term that you'd use, but a subordinate, uh, provider rather than, uh, the city trying to reinvent something that already exists.
Yeah, we can look into that and see how we can work with others.
Okay. And I, I noticed that, uh, the, the description or the mention of work here at City Hall, uh, says plural for elevators. How many elevators can we put in this building?
I think the, the plural meant more of citywide, um, especially.
Set city halls.
Yeah, um, I think about six here, no, I'm kidding. Um, probably one here. And then if we do upgrades at the Smith Building, bringing that elevator to code, making it usable again, um, and then just evaluating the rest of the city facilities to make sure that we have the access for all.
Yeah, I guess, I know when you and I toured the Smith Building, there, there is an elevator there that was built with the building, but it's not in use currently. And again, I was just, you know, when I see multiple elevators for City Hall, it's like, it is a historic building, so I, I know we need one, but.
Right, yeah. Completely understand.
You had included some information here about what other cities are doing. Uh, you know, when I looked at the breakdown that you had, um, this looks to be money that's primarily being used by others for public projects. There may be some money available for private, uh, business enterprise. You know, there's a mention of expanding outdoor dining. I know many of our restaurants have already done that. They saw that, you know, that was something that the public desired, so they've put that in. You know, going through the Paycheck Protection Program, and again, that program was designed to, uh, you know, Councilman Adams had mentioned those essential workers. That money was there, uh, for that, uh, how the businesses used it. I know that some were paying, uh, you know, extra pay to their employees. I, I'm a little bit leery of, of pushing this program out to support private individuals. Uh, I don't see that that is the general use of this type of money.
Sure. And really I included that in the presentation because it is an eligible use, just to make you aware of that. Historically, there's never been more funding provided to small businesses than during the pandemic through the PPP loans, the EIDL funds, um, and then other grants that came out through local governments. But, um, if it was the council's will to do, uh, some kind of grant program, we can definitely explore that. And if not, um, we can, of course, if there's a need later down the line, then we can look at that if, if it occurs in the next two years.
It, it does appear though nationally, um, this, the focus has been on public projects to benefit entire communities rather than, uh, benefiting a, a particular individual.
That's completely correct. And also looking at our vis a visu data, um, Boulder City businesses are doing, um, performing at a level higher than before I-11 was opened at this point. So that's really great news and, uh, really happy for them.
Yes, absolutely. And again, that is an average. So we know that there are some businesses that, you know, they've not made it up to that level, but it certainly is good news that, uh, at least on average, that's the case. With regard to that premium pay, were we paying, uh, employees overtime pay if overtime was being incurred? Because I believe that was an eligible expense under the CARES Act.
It was an eligible expense under the CARES Act. Um, there is a date that these funds can be used from going forward. And do you know off the top of your head? Yeah, so these funds could be used as of March of last year. And I'm not sure if we had any overtime during that time, but I could find out if, if that's, you know, able to be used. I know that our fire department did a, a real, they went above and beyond throughout, uh, the last couple of years and haven't received any. I mean, they've received some recognition, but, but nothing, um, of a monetary, um, addition.
Right. Uh, and you know, let's say a firefighter did work, uh, some overtime hours and they were paid that overtime. But exempt employees, I don't know if they're eligible for overtime, is that?
They're not.
Okay. So anybody in an exempt class, generally that's a management person, would not have received additional pay during the past two years.
Correct. So like, um, you know, the firefighters doing the testing would have been eligible for overtime.
If it was overtime.
Right. And, uh, if it was the fire chief there, he, he'd just, you know, be working extra.
Right. Well, again, I, I do think that's something we need to take a look at. You know, I know the majority of the CARES Act money we received, uh, did go to cover those type of expenses as far as overtime went. But I don't think we've ever taken a look back at, uh, the other efforts that may have been put into this. And it, it's not only what we typically consider first responders, because I know that, you know, Parks and Rec, Public Works, everybody had some. And again, some of those employees were paid overtime if they had worked it, uh, but I, I believe it is something we need to take a look at. Those are the items that I have. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen? Those are the items that I have. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, just thinking about the kids, like you had said, and the talk about park and rec and how they were used. I mean, really, we saw a huge influx of people wanting to be outside and outdoors. And I know that a while back, that their budget was cut and hasn't been up to snuff. And there's just a few facilities around town and, you know, that could be looked at, I think. And then also, I think a dog park wouldn't be out of the question either.
I don't, you know, just in response to that, I guess, I don't know that the Parks and Rec budget has been cut that I'm aware of. But that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is not just a program where kids might have a spot to go to after school. I'm talking about a concentrated effort to try and mitigate the loss of schooling that these children have had over the past two years.
I'm just asking this question. Have you had an opportunity to talk to anyone in the schools to see what the district is doing for that? Because I do know that at the end of last year, they did summer school for everyone who wanted to do summer school. I do know, too, that they're hiring positions right now to have in-house tutoring for the kids. So I just wouldn't want to duplicate services per se. So making sure that we go in, if that's the direction that we decide to take, make sure that we go in to Clark County School Districts and see exactly what they are doing to mitigate the effects of this, since they are the first line of defense.
And I agree with you. I believe that Clark County School District has received or will receive three-quarters of a billion dollars for this. How CCSD is going to manage that money? Well, let's hope they do it well. But I certainly don't want to see anything where we would be duplicating effort. But I do know, because I experienced it, the effort that the city put forth in looking into what we could do was not sufficient, in my view. And I think that we owe that portion of our community, which includes their parents, a hard look at what we can make available. And to duplicate anything, no, I would not want to do that. But if we're looking at any segment of our community that's been pretty much universally impacted by this, it's our schoolchildren.
I think my first course of action would be reaching out to my contacts with the school districts, the regional superintendent, go to the more granular level with the principals, which I've all met, you know, get their ideas and feedback and see if, you know, make sure we're not duplicating and to see what their needs are, what they think.
I agree. And, you know, my concern always is that a CCSD solution that's supposed to apply district-wide may not be appropriate for Boulder City. And we may be able to do something in addition to whatever they have planned. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. On that note, I think another area, at least part of a key to that, since we are, we're talking about mental health, social services, I think a big key of that is a focus on the mental health needs of the children, because I think that will be key in in trying to mitigate those effects. So I have a meeting with the, at the Board of Health tomorrow. I'm actually meeting, have a separate meeting on Friday with SNHD regarding social services as it relates to substance abuse. But I certainly will bring up the conversation on what opportunities we have, might have for programs for addressing some of the mental health issues that did arise from from these children not having the contact, the socialization that they were used to. And would be happy to speak with Dr. Legan, get the right department heads involved, and get that conversation going with the city as well. So be happy to do that.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'll just, I'll just keep talking. So one of the other things that I was thinking of regarding the second grouping of money, the willy-nilly money, whatever we want to call it, one area that I know we have been discussing and has been being worked on by Public Works right now is the potential for, you know, a new lighting ordinance, new lighting standards that might move towards a night sky lighting, which probably would be if we actually wanted to be proactive on that, as opposed to just as the lights need to get changed. And with some of these LED lights, might be 20, 30 years, I don't know. But if we wanted to be proactive in actually replacing these bright white LED lights to bring in maybe a more night sky-friendly lighting, you know, that probably would be an expensive project. And I think it might be something worthwhile to view that as an area where this funding might be able to go. Obviously, there's a whole lot of needs, but I would like to, at the very least, see what those costs might be and how this money might be used to do that.
Yeah, it would definitely be achievable under that, the revenue loss provision. And, you know, we can provide options for if you just wanted to do residential streets, or you wanted to do all the arterials, things like that. But it would be nice to have the uniformity to really clean it up.
Yeah. And again, I know that they are working on it, so hopefully we will see that sooner than later. The other thing, I guess, going back to all of this with the irrigation needs, you know, we are going through, you know, we are, you know, going through what are the landscaping needs going to be moving forward. You know, there is a big conversation right now in where we are going to go as far as, you know, using our water to irrigate in general. As those, as those kind, as those questions come up and are addressed, if we have decided we want to set aside money for something and then quickly realize, oh, actually, you know, with the new line of thought is, this is how this should be done, how flexible can we be if we, if we, you know what I'm saying? You know, if, oh, this is going towards this type of irrigation project, but, you know, SNWA or whoever says, actually, that type of irrigation project is not really that desired. We want to see this type, you know, how flexible are we in that? And when, essentially, when does this money need to be spent by in order for it to be used?
So we would be completely flexible up until the end of the year of 2024 for committing the funds. And then we have until the end of 2026 to have those fully spent. So couple years of pivoting, changes, definitely.
And then, I guess, to use that word again, not to be facetious, but we are talking about, you know, using money towards, you know, big-scale utility projects. And we did have a conversation just the other night, last night, literally, about why we want to make sure that our, you know, our utility funds are self-sufficient, you know, that this is an enterprise fund, we shouldn't just be interjecting money into it. How does this conversation fit into that?
Well, it's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to have all of this funding come to the city. And if it could be used somewhere else, I would definitely recommend to use it elsewhere. But it's really the only place that we can get it spent. And it will make a meaningful impact for the utilities. There's a lot of plastic piping that needs to be replaced, and we can do all of that a lot quicker. And then we can move on to other projects so that we'll have, you know, a really good, up-to-date system.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that this is an example of revenue from outside an enterprise fund that is perfectly legitimate to use. So there are other revenue sources that go into enterprise funds that don't break any laws or put us in jeopardy or any of that. This is money that's been made available from another source to go into an enterprise fund without it being directly related to charges to users.
That's correct. And it'll keep rates low longer. So, or, you know, however you see fit.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I, this is a question about our intersections, okay? And I'm not clear about the answer to this. We have walked around some of the streets, especially in Nevada Way, where those, I think they're called yellow, the truncated dots, where one ramp was created in order for for time and money, instead of one facing, say, north and one facing west, you have one at an angle where if a, and we've seen a blind person with a seeing-eye-dog will go look for the one that's directly opposed, and will cross the street at a diagonal. So in order to replace those, A, I'm not sure does, because RTC paid for it the first time, are they willing to pay for it? And I'm looking at you, Keegan, is RTC willing to repair that inadvertently poor, poor design element? Or is that something that we would be paying for? And if we pay for it, is that something that these funds could be used for? Because we've done some walking around that area, and it's a serious problem because, not necessarily for the person in the wheelchair or on a scooter, but certainly for somebody who's visually impaired.
I know that Keegan, our Public Works Director, has been working with RTC on identifying how we can replace those. Anything else to add?
I just wanted to say that it's not so much that they were put in wrong the first time.
No, it's an inadvertent misjudgment.
But with the new standards, yeah. And it's, it's been in place for a while, but they do need to be perpendicular to the street, and that is something RTC would pay for.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, then I won't worry about it, because I just want to see that fixed.
But if they don't, then, you know, we can look at it, definitely.
Right. But I just wanted to confirm that RTC would be paying for, yeah, it seemed like a good idea at the time, but it's not the best option. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Say we put monies towards certain projects, and then later on recognize that, say, maybe a Southern Nevada Water District or whatever puts in more than we thought they were going to put in to match. And I know they have to be committed by 2024. Do they have to be specified? Like, does it leave it that way in stone? Or do we have the ability then to be flexible and put that towards a different project up until that point?
So as long as the project's not started, yes. And from my understanding, the majority of local governments have actually allocated their funds by using percentages. So like 30% water, 30% wastewater, or, you know, like that. But having those reports, we can get more clarity on that to make sure we're following every rule. The first reporting requirement hasn't come up yet, but it is on its way. So we'll make sure that we're following all the rules.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I know a lot of times that we get outside sources that come in and help match or fund in different ways. And so it changes sometimes the way that the cost of our projects turn out.
And I think the irrigation's a great example of that, because the original cost estimate was $2 million, but then it turned into $6. And then we found out about the matching program. So, so it could go that way for a few things, but we'll make adjustments as we go.
And since you've mentioned that, you know, we seem to have had a problem for a very long time. We have these very large projects. And, you know, getting them designed, and I don't mean conceptually, but actually where they're ready to be built and then implemented, you know, we're looking at a lot of work here. So I think serious consideration needs to be built into this. If we do not have the personnel to put these projects in place within the period of time that the money's available, then we need to look outside and make sure that the projects do get designed and do get implemented. And that's going to be part of the cost, I'm sure, that would be allowed under these guidelines. Is that-
That's true. So my general thought is, any of these projects, they would be put out for RFP when they're approved, and then it would be hired out. So we wouldn't be able to accomplish every water and wastewater project, designing it on our own or something like that. So we would, we would have to rely on, on outside contractors and engineers, things of that nature, to do all of these things in such a quick manner.
And, and, you know, I guess that gets to the way that things are done with an RFP, whether it's the construction manager at risk or C Mar approach, or does it require a design and then bid? We may want to give strong consideration to that construction manager at risk process.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at what the best, quickest options are for us.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. You know, I think, you know, part of why we're here, and I know we're not here to take action today, but part of why we're here is because when it came up, you know, we were kind of being asked for soft commitments. And so I guess the question is, is how important are those? Because I think that was where the, because there's a certain point when we say, yeah, we think this is where we want the money to go, that it becomes the assumption that that is where the money is going to go. And it kind of creates this thing in your head where, well, we can't take it away because we've already made assumptions based off of that. And it, you know, it starts the ball rolling down that way. So how important is it that we have, you know, are there dates in which we have to have said, this is where we're looking at it? Or should it be something that just comes to us as we say, okay, we're ready to go with this, let's do this now? I mean, how do we, how should we see this coming to us so that we make sure that we're all on the same page? Because at this point, you know, we're, there's this, and there's that, and we can spend money for all of these different projects. How should it, how should it be coming before us?
That's kind of the next thing that I wanted to talk to you about. So my general thought is, for this first half of the money that we already have in hand, we should go ahead and bring a spend plan to you. I'll line out every project so that it's very clear what it is, why we're doing it, and have you adopt that so that we can start spending the money on these projects, especially the large water and wastewater projects. Because if we don't get started now, it's going to be really difficult to spend it if we commit them in two years, and then we only have two years to do the project. So starting it now would be ideal. So we'll put together a detailed spend plan for the council for that first half of the funds. And then we can start talking a little more in depth about all of the kind of fun projects that you'd like to do with the $10 million and the benefits to schoolchildren, you know, dog parks, things of that nature. But moving forward, spending the funds as quickly as possible, because there's, you know, $21 million that has to be spent. And we really don't want to give it back because it'll benefit the residents of Boulder City, so.
And then, looking at this, we would have, just with the first, we have a remaining $620,000. And then with the second, that is subject to the, the, all the regulations, stipulations. And then the second one will have $886,000. So, you know, we're talking what, 14, 15, 1.5 million, I guess, in the end?
Right. And you could look at that as a contingency of, you know, costs are rising every day. But I would assume that those, that fund or any other projects that aren't able to be done or aren't needed, as time moves on, then you could reassign and relook at other projects. It'll kind of be a moving, ever-evolving process, but getting started on some of those big-ticket items that we can would be ideal. And I'll work on scheduling some kind of open house for the public to come, if that's what you'd like us to do. And we can get a little bit more feedback on what the community is looking for.
I think a good way to do it would be, if you're talking about the Town Hall meeting for the second portion, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and overall.
Right, okay. I think, I think with something like that, I mean, I think it would be really good to just get the general input on areas that are important. But I also think it would probably be good for us to have an understanding of, you know, we've all shared a bunch of ideas. Where are, where are those costs even at, you know? So I don't want to go out and say, we can, or we want to do all of these things. Where do we, you know, where do we put our focus? So I think trying to focus it down on what is manageable, what is realistic, and then going from there, rather than just kind of going at a, you know, a free-for-all.
Sure.
That's my, that's my-
So an idea, so I could bring the spend plan back to the council on the first half of the money with, with all of those projects spelled out and what they would be. And then we could also bring back a cost estimate of all of the- And then we could also bring back a cost estimate of all of the things that we've discussed and some ideas after having conversations with the school district and the social service organizations in town, things of that nature. So then you can see kind of where we're at, how much more of the $10 million would be left if we accomplished all the things that we've talked about today. And then, there might be a lot left, there might be a little left.
This might be opening a can of worms, so, here we go. Is it possible that each of the areas within the city could submit, I know we have kind of a, an overall plan, but the number two things, you know, the top two things that they see as needs, right now, for them, in their area? Say it's Park and Rec, or say it's the courthouse, or say, you know, wherever it is that are the top two needs, so that we could be looking at those to address them across the board, maybe give a little bit of equity?
Sure. I could have Lisa do kind of a public information campaign, we could put it in the paper for those that don't use social media, we can do it all over, all of our suite of social media products, using comments on there or the email address that we've had created, blast it all over the city websites, send it out to our mailing lists, things of that nature, and start trying to get some public feedback just in that way.
Right, and if we could get the ideas in, I agree with James, then we whittle those ideas down to priorities, then we can present the priorities at that point and pick, if they, let them look at them and decide what is most priority to them at that point, and/or decide what is most priority within the city, the things that we need to address.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? And so I don't know, I know you had planned to talk about public input, so I don't know if that was that conversation or if you wanted to...
Sure, that does play into it. So, we can go ahead and, you know, starting next week, solicit top two ideas from residents through any way that we have to reach them. We can put it in the utility mailer as well, and try to get responses that way. If you'd like to hold an open house with boards of different uses and see what, you know, people like the best, we can definitely do that, just whether you'd like us to or not.
I just think it, maybe it would be hard to sell wastewater if it was compared to a dog park. So, some of those uses probably wouldn't be as attractive as others, is what I was trying to say.
Sure.
But still is necessary. So, maybe we'd limit what the option, because we only have maybe, what, the $10 million within there to look at, maybe in that, but then address the infrastructure, the water needs and all that with the other.
Yeah, and I think our hands are kind of tied with those four main criteria. So, I think the majority of the community asks will be out of the revenue loss provision. You know, people might want a splash pad, they might want the dog park, they might want different playground equipment, things like that.
Councilmember Adams?
Personally, I think the area that's most important to receive the public input is with the, the $10 million that's set aside. I think when we're talking about, you know, stipulated money that has to be spent for very specific things, I think that does fall more in line with making sure that, that we are overseeing and making sure that money's spent. Because, yeah, we have, we have the water projects, but we also have, you know, the ability to, you know, if we do need to support, you know, some of the employee, the essential workers, fire, police, that, that, you know, really work. And I, I picked them out, but really every, every department really worked, you know, they had to work, work overtime, they had to work, well, literal overtime, but, you know, they're, they had to do a lot more than what they were normally required to do in any other normal year. So, I just think we need to be certain that we are not, you know, just looking at this, you know, we've got all this money, let's spend it all on these big things, just make sure that we really are, like, as you said, if there are other areas where that money can be spent, we should. And then, you know, with, you know, because it's such a large sum of that does go there, then we can put that into the wastewater and water needs.
Thank you. And I would just add, you know, when we start using phrases, and I do understand that, you know, it's not being said to be serious about it, but when we start using phrases like willy-nilly or that type of thing on this money, you know, this money is for the improvement of the community and to mitigate the issues that COVID brought about. So, I certainly want input from the public, but there will be times where there are going to be members of the public that really, really want some type of project, but it has a very narrow benefit for the community. And I think that's where it comes back to this city council to put priorities on these things. You know, the dog park has been brought up several times. Are there other alternatives to that? And really, what portion of the community is going to be served by that? So, that comes back to city council to make those final decisions on what those priorities are. You know, even the night skies project, you know, is that something that needs to be done with this money? Or is that something that has a much longer time horizon to it? That, that's going to be up to the council to decide. But I, I think that it's important for everybody to keep in mind, there are priorities. And yes, there will be some people that are very passionate about a particular project, but it will have a very narrow benefit. So, that needs to be, that will certainly be a criteria I use approaching those things.
It's definitely a way to create a meaningful impact with this once-in-a-lifetime money, so.
And it should be viewed as pretty much once-in-a-lifetime, because I kind of doubt that many of us will see another level of support, because after all, COVID was a once-in-a-hundred-year tragedy for this country. So, let's hope it's another 100 years before something like that happens. Anyone else? Did you have more? I know there were a couple of other bullet points here that you had.
I think I've got all the direction that I, I could use. But again, I'd like to just promote that the, you know, the ClearGov public-facing portal for the CIP projects is out there, if any members of the public want to take a look at it. It does have the photos, like I mentioned, and maps, so it's really helpful. And, yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know, you know, you had mentioned last night with your city manager's report, a new page has been added to that as well. So, on a monthly basis, that information's going to be made available to the community. What are we doing with this $21.7 million, and how is it intended to move forward?
Yeah, and the great thing on that, it'll show what's committed, what's spent, and what's remaining. So, very transparent and open.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. This is a good start, I believe, and we will adjourn the meeting then. Oh, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Public comment, our final public comment period, maybe on any subject. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak. Anyone in chambers who would like to speak during this final public comment period? All right, we will then make the phone line available. Anyone wishing to call in, the number 702-589-9629.
I would like to make public comment on the meeting that just finished.
Go ahead.
I, I am in favor of making sure we get the water type of projects done. We are in the middle of a horrendous drought, and who knows how much longer it's going to last. And water is something that's very necessary. Reusing wastewater, getting that situation cleared up so it can be reused for the green parts of town that we need, for those that need green parts, and getting the wa, water, you know, potable water secured and the lines updated if they need to be or whatever, is truly important. The, while I realize the non-union personnel or non-hourly personnel, I'm sure they, some of them probably put in extra hours that they were not compensated from, because that comes as part of the job. When you accept a position like that, there are other perks as a non-hourly person that you get, that hourly people don't necessarily have if they punch the time clock. And I am not in favor of spending money where it only benefits a small amount of people and especially individuals, because while you may feel you have to compensate those people that didn't get overtime because of the position they hold at the city level, what are you going to do about all the, it's not fair to the other citizens of Boulder City who are in similar positions, but they don't work for the city, they work for a private business? And so you're going to, they get nothing out of this. And this is supposed to be public money, it's supposed to go to the general public or benefit the general public. So, I'm not in favor of doing individual things that benefit just the people that own a dog or just the people that work for the city in a certain capacity. I, I think that is a whole different conversation that needs to go elsewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. The phone line is available, anyone wishing to speak in the final public comment period? The phone number 702-589-9629.
No comments were received.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to call in, the number 702-589-9629. Thank you all.